Junior ROTC program and the auto technical program. Joshua's teachers state that he is working very hard to be successful in all of his programs and he's a very nice young man. Ellet High School is proud to have Joshua Hardy as an orange man, class of 2020. Joshua is attending the board meeting this evening to fulfill a requirement towards earning the rank of Eagle Scout. We are pleased that he has agreed to lead us in saying the pledge of allegiance. Joshua here? All right, well Joshua is not here. So we will stand and I'll just lead us in the pledge. Pledge of allegiance.
To the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if he does come in, we'll acknowledge his presence and his outstanding accomplishments. At this time, we'll have our community school and reflections, if anyone has them, if you want to include him.
Is it possible that we can bypass that through this meeting and move on since we have so much to think about? A number of the board members were, excuse me, were thinking about that, if it's okay with you?
It's okay with me.
Okay.
Mr. Miller has a whole list of wonderful things to present, but we will get those later. Our communications and recognition, Mr. Joseph Vassalotti will lead us in recognizing our winter sports scholar athletes.
Good evening, everyone. As always, at this time, we like to do this after each season, this will be after the winter sports season, of course. So first, we'd like to acknowledge our championship teams from the past season and quickly summarize. Want to acknowledge Firestone Swim Team, awesome in qualifying 10 individuals for the state meet in Canton, and two of those actually ended up on the podium, Madeline Dyer and Jack Saum finishing seventh, both finishing seventh in the respective 200 individual medley. So that was pretty awesome for the Firestone Swim Team. In the bowling world, we had Ellet's Girls win the city championship this year and later on then qualified for the OHSA state meet in Columbus for the first time in school history. So that was really cool for Ellet's Girls Bowling. On the boys' side there, East won the city championship, great job for the Dragons, longtime Coach Silkot's there, another fine job for East. In wrestling, Firestone won our city meet, awesome job for Coach Sandy and his wrestlers, so congratulations to them. And then we're left with basketball and the world of basketball on the girls' side, which was really interesting, our city championship game, we had Kenmore Garfield defeat Bookdell, very close game, well attended, it was awesome, very exciting, so congrats to the Golden Rams for that. And the Bookdell Girls with an awesome regular season, carried that through the disappointing loss in championship game and into the tournament and ended up winning the district championship in Division II and advancing to regional play, represented the city with a lot of pride, so that's awesome for Coach Newt Bower and his team. Of course, as many of you know, the Bookdell Boys Basketball Team had a tremendous season, not only winning the city championship in a closely fought game with Ellet, again, very well attended and a very exciting game, but they also won their district championship and then won their regional championship in Division II and advanced to the state final four last week in Columbus, which was awesome. Great experience for those guys and Coach Futch. Anything, Mr. Williams? Oh, I thought you had something for the good of the order.
No.
Anyway, fantastic job by the boys. And we always want to recognize the academic all-city honorees that we get each, each season to qualify, a student athlete has to earn at least a 3.4 GPA and earn varsity letter in a given season. So in the winter sports season, we have 99 total, we kept counting three or four times to get that 100 student athlete, but we ended up with 99, which is still pretty awesome. And some of whom are here tonight, so we'd like to call up any student athletes who's here tonight, we recognize as academic all-city coming up. I know we have a few here, maybe Firestone? No? Yes? Now, we had 11 on the schedule today, unfortunately, a lot of them, or maybe fortunately, mother nature's smiling, so they're playing spring sports today, first day for spring sports, so we wish them the best, a block in the sunshine out there. But from each of our attendees, we'll hear your name, school, sport, and grade, if you could do that for us, so maybe I'll lead out there.
My name is Senakizmana, and I go to my high school. I wrestle, and I'm in level eight.
I'm Jacob Murray, I'm a senior sophomore at Firestone.
I'm Isabella, I'm a senior sophomore at Firestone. I'm Caleb Vincent, I'm a freshman at Kenmore Garfield High School in the bowling team.
Well, I think it's so impressive during their season where they're going to school and playing sports and sometimes working jobs to earn at least a 3.4 GPA, and for most of them, well above that. So again, congratulations to all of them. And thanks to the board for the time, we appreciate it greatly.
We do want to acknowledge at this time our student representative to the school board, student board member, Luke Buckingham, and each of our student representatives gives us a little purview, synopsis of things that they're doing at their individual schools. So if you want to share with us before we go further, we'll hear that now.
Oh, okay. Sorry. A couple of things from Firestone. Firestone's vex robotics teams is going to Worlds, which is a huge accomplishment because the top 1,200 student-led teams from all over the world will be competing in Louisville, Kentucky over the course of April 24th to 27th. Firestone makes up 18% of the students competing, which is incredible. Another big thing, 300 of Firestone's freshmen went to Kent State for a college visit. The visit was focused on the pathways selected. The event was coordinated by Coach Hannah and Mrs. Cotron, and my favorite one personally, the theater students put on the musical Big Fish. It is Firestone's only musical for the year and it happened over the course of two weekends. Big Fish is a musical about how a man whose father told him exaggerated stories about his life, several dozen students participated and put on a professional show for only $10. The musical is solely funded by ticket sales, and as a quick side note, Firestone had an auction where you could buy seniors for a day. The money goes to after prom. It was a fun event for everyone who participated. I enjoyed it, so yeah. Thank you.
If you want to come, Mark Williamson can take a picture of us, and if our scholar athletes, we don't want to miss you. If you can come up quickly, athletes, we'll take a picture of you as well. Look at you as well. You want to come up quickly, scholar athlete? We do have several persons who need to address the board, and then one we will pause in going to executive session to talk with those individuals. First up, we want to invite Teresa Gadomoski.
I said it's Gadomoski.
Gadomoski.
That's okay. Here's a folder for everyone, if you could peruse at your leisure. As I look around the room today, first of all, I'd like to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to come in and speak to you about the dental assisting program, my passion, my life. I've had people for this for maybe four years. I saw the sign today that said, "Who I am today began with public education." No, that's not true. Who I am today began with Akron Public Schools education, and education that I received in the dental assisting program, and my mentor and instructor is here today to support me, Mrs. Carol Peeling, as well as Dr. Bracken, our dentist. So my concerns are basically for the students, the students in the Akron Public Schools. We are directly aligned with the vision of the Akron Public Schools. We want to be the best school district in America, best urban school district in America, and I believe that this program can help us get to reach that goal. It matters when students pass state tests, but it also matters when students pass state credentialing tests and can walk out into the community and have meaningful employment. Over the past three years, 75% of the students taking the dental assistant credential, Ohio credentialing test, and getting their dental radiographer's license have passed the test in the entire credentialing process. 25% of those students have gone on after, during their graduation year, to retake the part that they may not have been successful on, and they have been able to gain their credentials. High school graduates change careers four times by the age of 40. With the dental assisting program, they can move up the dental healthcare ladder and become dentists, hygienists, coronal polishers, lab techs, dental sales reps, corporate managers, just to name a few. I have had some corporate managers that are making more than I am now, and it's like, really? But anyway. These are the things that the students have completed through the APS program. They are not changing careers, but remaining in the profession and moving up the ladder. With the current allied health program that we are working on, students will not receive the traditional training needed to become a successful dental assistant. We are unique. We are a one-of-a-kind program in Summer County, and we have services community for over 60 years, providing education, dental treatment to the underprivileged that they so desperately need. A statistic, 50% of children that are on Medicaid do not go to the dentist, even though they have the ability. Why? Transportation, school day, not allowing doctors to take Medicaid. We have a dentist that we hire right here in the Akron Public Schools that trains, helps train my students, and provides that much-needed care.
We have about a few seconds to wrap.
Okay. We are unique. The financial investments that have been made into the program by the board, as well as the APS benefits the students, and as well, we're stating, we are a diamond right here in the APS family that has provided students with the best possible pre-college education with your continued support. Education flourishes when we consider all of the implications involved. I would please ask the board to weigh all of the factors involved, look at the data that I have given you, and reconsider the closing of the dental assisting program. Thank you for allowing me my three minutes of time.
Thank you. And at this time, we'll have Andrea West. And please remember, you do have three minutes, and try to remember just to let you know when you get close to those three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrea West. I'm an Akron alumni of Akron Bookdell High School. I sit on the Athletic Advisory Board for the Board of Education, and the reason that I'm speaking or requesting to address the board on tonight is regarding the Ellet-Bookdell High School Field Turf Initiative, which is to put turf in at Ellet High School. As a part of that initiative, it's a five-year plan that was set in place in 2017, and I'm sure the board will be familiar, and I'll leave literature with you, but as a part of that, we wanted to ask that you would as an addendum to the Dear Board of Education letter include for Bookdell, because we need a field that's on a facility for the east side, which would be Ellet, as well as the west side of Akron, which would be Bookdell, to see if you would consider as an addendum to add lights to that five-year program that we have incorporated as a board for consideration. So at this time, we have been able to accomplish getting boards, scoreboards throughout the district, as well as bleachers are underway, if you've paid attention to what's going on around the different high schools, and we're requesting that because Ellet is being considered first for field turf or grass, which is what's being submitted in the Board of Education letter, that you would at least consider Bookdell for lighting so that we will be allotted the same allotment that Ellet has, which they already have lights in place, for us to be able to host Friday Night Lights games, as well as Saturday afternoon and evening games if needed. Also, per an interview that our superintendent David James did with, on the Ray Horner Show on the WAKR show on this past March 20th, thank you, Mr. James, it talks about government funding for the next 2020 and 2021 years that's going to be allotted for wellness and health, which the first year would be $5 million, and then the second year in 2021, it would be $6 million. And I think as a part of the field initiative for Ellet, as well as Bookdell, and with the lighting and keeping in lieu the five-year upgrade plan that's in place, that I think that those monies would be well spent, put back into middle school programs, after-school programs, and in order to be able to do that, you would have to include the facilities to be allotted for those. And I know my time is coming to a close, so if you would, as an addendum, do not exclude lighting for Bookdell, include the lighting for Bookdell as a part of the five-year plan, even if you proceed forward with field turf at Ellet. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And at this time, Mr. George F. Fields, Jr.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. My name is George Fields, I'm from Twinsburg, Ohio, with the Akron Alumni Chapter of Capa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated. So it's a pleasure for us to talk with you this evening. We'd like to introduce you to our national service program that we do to mentor males here in the Akron area, specifically within Akron Public Schools, as well as St. Vincent, St. Mary. We have a program called the Embodied Capally. We have a partnership with Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, and in large part, our program is mentoring grades, what, nine through 12, Akron Public Schools. So Jamil Wright, one of our students here from STEM School, we have eight other students that are from Firestone, as well as St. Vincent, St. Mary. We are mentoring on all facets of success within high school, as well as success outside of high school, leading in the two-year, four-year college or technical school in life thereafter. Things such as public speaking skills, what goes on in a board meeting such as this, ACT, SAT preparation, the arts, sports, sciences, all of the things that are going to prepare these young men to be successful in life. So we really appreciate the opportunity to come in and address the board, and wanted to make it known what we're doing here in the Akron area.
Thank you very much.
I wanted to make a comment on that. These gentlemen, it's something they've been doing for a long time, it's part of the national program, as Mr. Fields mentioned, and I thought I saw the president of the organization.
Yes.
Former president.
Former president.
Okay, former. We try to keep you as the president. But this is a program that we're really very happy about, and it's something we always need to remind ourselves, that they're giving exposure to the kids, and one of the reasons they're here tonight is to give exposure to these young men who are a part of the program, come here, see what they do. We do a board meetings, take them to other government agencies and organizations across the city, so they can be exposed and see what's going on, hopefully make them more whole, well-rounded individuals, so that when they, as they grow older, they will be able to be ready to step into some of these positions and do some things, especially give them back to the community. I just had to put that in there. I'm sorry, Reverend, I know that wasn't...
No, no problem.
I wanted to make sure that was known.
We wanted to make sure, that just helps us to segue into acknowledging the president of Capa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated. If you don't mind standing, we're former president, past president of the fraternity. Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to have to go into executive session, which will mean we will have to clear, we're going to ask that you would leave this area and their seats out in the entrance area there, so we may be able to see, sit while we have our executive I want to thank you for your patience. We're back in session now, and we will move on to approve our meeting minutes for March 11.
Motion and agreement?
We don't.
You don't do that? So move down the minutes?
Second.
Move, probably second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Baylor?
Yes.
Bravo?
Yes.
Superintendent's recommendation?
Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 25 personnel recommendations. At this time, we are pulling item number five from consideration, other than that these recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
Please move. The move, probably seconded. Any questions or comments?
I just wanted to give a shout out to Isabella Meam, her retirement. She's been with the district a very long time. Do you have any idea how long it's been gone? I was going to say, she might have actually even been in the district when I was a student. So just, she's a choral teacher, and she's just, she's impacted a lot of lives, so I just wanted to give her a shout out.
Thank you.
Roll, roll call. Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Baylor?
Yes.
Bravo?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Superintendent's report?
Well, you'll notice Mr. Pendleton really looks different. You know, he and Dr. McWilliams Woods are in Columbus. I know there was, I believe, a preliminary roll out from the Cup and Patterson Group on school funding. Last week, I was in Columbus at the Ohio Way Coalition. The school takeover of law, House Bill 70, will most likely be revised. There's probably three options. One is to revise or replace House Bill 70. This is where, you know, Youngstown, Lorraine, and East Cleveland have been taken over by the state. Senator Laner's working on a bill which would really modify the current language and probably keep those three schools under an academic stress commission, and then another option is a complete rewrite. So all that has to be navigated between the governor's office, ODE, the House, and the Senate. So we're keeping our eyes out on that. It has a lot of implications also for graduation requirements and the report card as well. So all those things are now coming into play in Columbus. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. By way of president's report, we had the opportunity to have a conversation with Dr. Patricia Ackerman, who dealt with tech knowledge, and she wanted to share with us how we can, as the leaders in this area with college and career, be able to partner with other areas, like the schools in the Kyoga area or Stark County, how we can meet. There's a scheduled, a tentative workshop scheduled for October, where we'll bring in school board members, superintendents, and we know our superintendents have been very much engaged in conversation with superintendents in the area to look at best practices, how we can take our students and prepare them for not only the jobs that are present, but
So he as well has a lot of experience with community partnerships and young people out there too. So congratulations to both.
If you'd like to say a word, you can.
I just thank you so much for the opportunity. Really excited about this new family engagement center and just grateful to be a part of it.
What she said. No, I'm sorry. I appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this new chapter as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. And finally, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 27 business affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Baylor?
Yes.
Bravo?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bravo?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Baylor?
Yes.
Bravo?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bravo?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bravo?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Baylor?
Yes.
Bravo?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
And before moving to business affairs, Kathy McVeigh wants to speak about the engagement specialist, which will be part of our welcome center at 10 North Main.
Yes, in our new location at 10 North Main Street, as you know, there will be an engagement center there. And in the front, when you first walk in, there will be a large desk area where parents and students and community members will come in and visit and talk to the two, one of the two individuals that are there to help guide them through whatever process they need help with, get them connected to maybe any community needs that they might have out there. And so tonight, I just wanted to do just a real brief introduction of the two individuals that we are, have recommended tonight to be hired. First person would be Jessica Robb. Jessica, if you want to just stand for a second. So Jessica's coming to us from the Akron Canton Regional Food Bank. She's been employed there for a number of years and previous to that, she was with the victim assistance program. So she's got a lot of experience out there working with young people and with community members. And then our next person would be Mr. Samuel Hall of Haslam. And he's coming to us from the Akron Area YMCA. He's been working there since 2002, has been involved with our Phoenix Program. He's also been football coach over at Ford High School for the last several years. And prior to his employment at the Y, he was, worked for the CYO in community services. So he as well has a lot of experience with community partnerships and young people out there too. So congratulations to both.
If you'd like to say a word, you can.
I just thank you so much for the opportunity. Really excited about this new family engagement center and just grateful to be a part of it.
What she said. No, I'm sorry. I appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this new chapter as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. And finally, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 27 business affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Baylor?
Yes.
Bravo?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Baylor?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Baylor?
Yes.
Bravo?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bravo?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Baylor?
Yes.
Bravo?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Baylor?
Yes.
Bravo?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Baylor?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Baylor?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bravo?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Baylor?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Baylor?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Baylor?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Baylor?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Baylor?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Baylor?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Baylor?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Baylor?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Baylor?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Baylor?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Baylor?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Baylor?
Yes.
Flasher?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
By Manas and Capital Management Committee?
Yes. We met on the 20th and we covered a lot of ground. There were a couple of really exciting things to talk about. But first, 10 North Main, so we're still on target for that and we still have kind of an interval for eight and so we could have that under calendar. We're still on target to be in on time and everything's still going well there. We talked about disability life and there is of course a resolution in front of you